And where's my agenda for today? Uh huh. I had that open once, right?
Mm-hmm. Right there, baby. Awesome. I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Commission of October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. A printed agenda is available outside the hearing room and a copy of the full agenda, including the staff reports, are available online or at the Planning and Development Service Department, Room two thirteen. The Open Meetings Act is posted just inside the doors at the back of the room. In addition, a copy of all staff reports and other relevant documents for the matters to be considered by the Planning Commission are included in a binder that is located on the dais and is available to the public for review. Out of courtesy for those attending this meeting, commissioners and the staff, cell phones may not be used in the chamber during any portion of this meeting. We appreciate your cooperation. Please note the Planning Commission action today is final on the following items. Item one point one, special permit two five zero three nine, and item one point two, special permit twenty-five zero three six. Any aggrieved persons may appeal final action of the Planning Commission to the City Council or the County Board by filing a notice of appeal with the clerk within fourteen days following the action of the Planning Commission. The first item of business is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held October first, two thousand and twenty-five.
So move Campbell.
Second, Fight.
Second, Fight.
Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Ebert?
Yes.
Fight?
Yes.
Rothenberg?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Minutes approved.
The next item of business is the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda will be called at the same time and will not be scheduled for a separate public hearing unless there is a request from someone wishing to speak or at the request of a commission member. I will now ask Shelley to read all the consent agenda items into the record. Once those items are read, she will ask if there is anyone wishing to speak. If you wish to speak on an item on the consent agenda, we would ask that you stand and state that item. That item will then be removed from the consent agenda and scheduled as a separate public hearing under section three of today's agenda. All items remaining on the consent agenda will be voted upon in total with a motion for approval. Shelley, will you please call the items on the consent agenda?
Item one point one, special permit two five zero three nine to allow for the expansion of a non-standard structure for in addition to an existing single-family dwelling to be located within the required side yard setback, generally located at forty-two hundred Southwest twelfth Street, and this is final action. Item one point two, special permit two five zero three six to allow parking associated with the Sawyer Church within the front yard setback on property generally located at twenty-six forty R Street, and this is also final action. Are there any expedite communications to be disclosed on these items?
No, there are not.
Are there any expedite communications that took place or additional information you learned while visiting any of these sites to be disclosed?
No, there are not.
If there is anyone here wishing to speak on this, these consent agenda items, please stand and state that item.
We do not see anyone here that would like to speak on the consent agenda items. We would now entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
I would move for the consent agenda.
Second, Fight.
Shelley?
Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Ebert?
Yes.
Fight?
Yes.
Rothenberg?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Consent agenda approved seven to zero.
There are no requests for deferral, so we will now proceed to public hearings. Prior to staff making a brief presentation, each staff person should state their name, agency, and address. The applicant will then be requested to present their testimony, followed by those who wish to testify in support, followed by those who wish to testify in opposition. The staff will then be given an opportunity for rebuttal. If during your testimony you have copies of documents or materials you would like distributed to the Planning Commission members or to be included as part of the record, please provide them to the clerk. Each person testifying should state their name and address, and then she'll have five minutes to speak unless additional time is requested and granted. The clerk will use the light system to help aid your timing for the testimony. The lights will appear on the monitors provided. The clerk will indicate when you have one minute remaining to wrap up your testimony. The red light indicates your five minutes have expired. Once the final minute has elapsed, the clerk will indicate that your time is up. The Planning Commission will vote immediately at the close of the public hearing unless the commission votes to defer action or continue the public hearing. Shelley, please call the first public hearing item.
Item four point one, text amendment two five zero one two, amending the Lincoln Municipal Code, chapters twenty-six and twenty-seven, to update, update the existing pump station policy, outlining eligibility requirements and standards to accommodate non-gravity wastewater treatment services. Are there any expedite communications to be disclosed on this application?
There are not.
Good afternoon. David Carey, Director of the Planning and Development Services Department. Here with Steve Dush. Very glad to be here with you about this topic. I'm going to give an overview, kind of look at this and kind of explain how we got here, and then Steve is going to walk through some of the details of what the proposed policy has in it and then provide some time for questions, obviously. So, big picture. We, the Planning Department and the city in general, we are looking actively at as many different ways to look at our policies and our codes to provide for more opportunity for housing. We acknowledge that there's a lot of housing needs out there. The cost of housing is of a concern for everyone. And we, the city, we want to make sure that we're doing what we can to be part of the solution for that. There are many things being discussed. There are several items that will come before you in the next several months that are related to this effort to try to provide more opportunity, and that is what we see this proposal as. It's an opportunity. It's more. It's a way to think of it on the housing front. We were approached several months ago by someone from the private sector to consider updating the existing policy for temporary pump station. And I'll point-blank say that the existing policy is very unusable. It hasn't really been used. It's been in place since twenty-twenty-one, two thousand and one, so twenty-four years. And so, as we've talked about it, we talked with several folks, kind of what their ideas are on updating that policy and trying to see what we can do with it. We kind of got to the point of thinking and saying to ourselves and saying it out loud of, well, why not? Why not do that? Really, what we needed to do was ensure that the the needs of the city were still put in place and protected. And if we could come up with an updated policy that allowed for more opportunity for housing that otherwise wouldn't happen for ten, fifteen, twenty years down the road, waiting for the gravity flow sewer to arrive to a certain area, why not? So, with that in mind, we took a look at it and we did some work and we had a lot of discussion about this. And what you have before you is a much more usable policy. And I'll be clear before I hand it off to Steve that this is not meant to be the solution to all of our problems when it comes to housing. That's why there's a lot of other conversations happening as well. But it is a piece of the puzzle. It's another tool in the toolbox to allow for more development to happen and allow more housing to occur faster. And I'll also be very clear that this update, as is the case with the current policy, really is not meant to be the way we do development. Our gravity flow sewer system is still the way to do it for the vast majority of development. And it works and it continues to work for us. This is, this is the more. This is the in addition to way of looking at it. So, with that, I'm going to hand it off to Steve and then we'll be available for questions.
All right. Good afternoon. Steve Dush, Planning and Development Services, five five five, South Tenth Street. So, like David had indicated, this is a reexamination of the policy. And when we, actually, if you'll recall, we came to y'all back in July and there was a, a comp plan amendment for a piece of property that was going to go from, I believe it was tier one C and tier two to tier, to tier one B. And that was contingent upon the revision of the pump station policy. And so, as we started to dig into that a little bit more, we, we've morphed that from a policy because when we were, were here talking to you, we said, well, that's going to go to the City Council. So now it's an ordinance. And so that's what's in your packet, is there's an ordinance that would amend chapters twenty-six and twenty-seven. Also as backup, there are an amendment to, to chapter seventeen, and I'll get into that. But that really deals with the financing mechanism. So, when, when, again, taking a look at this, some of the guiding principles that were sort of manifest within that original policy is what staff had taken a look at to make sure that all those things were, were carried forward. So, making it, making sure that the, the intent of that existing policy, meaning that the, the financial aspects of it are borne by the applicants and the users benefiting from, from the service of a lift station were intact, that the, the gravity sewer system remains intact. And so as a part of that evaluating this, as you know, Lincoln has a number of different sub-basins. And so, taking a look at what are some of those components to make sure that, again, the purpose and intent behind that original policy are kept intact, but then how can we do more? So, the lens is equal to or better than. And so, this ordinance as proposed, we believe, you know, sort of meets that while at the same time addressing a project that, that David had mentioned earlier that could actually happen but for the, the, the pump station, the lift station, I guess is what we're calling it. So, some of the key components in the ordinance, right now, the policy is acreage, five hundred to a thousand acres. That's, that's a big chunk of dirt. So, this, this ordinance would, would lower that to a minimum of a hundred and fifty acres. Also, again, so that's like, that's like step one. Step two is that anybody who assembles that or has that acreage is going to have to demonstrate with their engineer, with, with L T U, that all of the capacity within that sub-basin that is going to be fed by the existing sewer system could still be fed, of course, and receive that affluent, whether it's existing or proposed and not yet built. So, any of those folks that are reliant upon gravity but just haven't, you know, pulled the trigger and developed it yet, that capacity has to remain intact. So, all of that existing, again, sort of volume, if you will, has to be accounted for. And if there's any capacity left, then that could back into and then take advantage of that. So, not only does that have the opportunity to allow for the development of more acreage, but it's also a very fiscally responsible sort of use of cities' funds utilizing existing infrastructure and capacity that would otherwise not be utilized. There's also some elements that David had mentioned as a part of this sort of overall housing package about how can we provide, you know, additional units? So there would be a requirement on this development, anyone being served by that, that lift station, that the overall gross density of the project would have to be five D U, five dwelling units per acre on average. Additionally, there's a required requirement for any of the single-family homes that are proposed. Ten percent of those would need to be at a lot size of four thousand or less. It also allows for A D Us as a use by right. And so that would be another element to, again, add and take advantage of land that would otherwise not be available for development, again, but for a lift station, again, ensuring that all capacity is met. And then a funding methodology. Again, that was at the outset of this conversation, one of those guiding principles. So, all the capital that would go into not only the, the pumps and, and the force main, that would have to be borne by the development. And then the service that those users receive are going to be paid for through a service fee. That's the chapter seventeen stuff. Again, we're not acting on that. That's just there for your benefit. And then also, through some of those things, we find that there's, could be some really innovative land use planning and design components available. And so those are really the key components of it. So I would leave you with equal to or better than the existing policy, and it allows for the utilization of existing infrastructure that's already there. And with that, I'll just kind of leave it open for any questions you might have. And of course, we would recommend approval.
Anything, commissioners? Okay, well said. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, members of the Planning Commission. Danae Kalkowski, eleven twenty-eight Lincoln Mall, Suite one oh five, here on behalf of Matadoll LLC. So, my client was the one who was here in front of you in July this year asking for the comp plan amendment. And you gave your approval to that amendment contingent upon us coming forward with the update to the pump station policy. Because in that discussion, we talked about the fact that that property's got water available, roads available, and sewer was the one piece of infrastructure lacking to allow it to move forward. Since then, staff decided to go more of the putting it in the ordinance route versus just staying with the policy so you get to see it again even though we thought we were headed right to council. So, after discussing, I think, all of this, we want to really thank city staff for being willing to go back and take a look at this policy. I think we met back in January with them to talk about this piece of property and ask them to think about whether there would be some other parameters for being able to utilize a lift station. And so, we're thankful that they had a bunch of internal discussions and talked it through to come up with some adjustments to the policy that would allow its opportunity for some additional use. I think the new ordinance provisions, we feel, expand the opportunity, opportunity for utilization, not only for the property we're talking about, but for other potential properties around our community, but still protect the city on the things that Steve was mentioning, right? That the original policy provided the protection for. I think, again, it's a good fiscal use for the city, allowing property to open up earlier than it may otherwise have been able to do and take advantage of infrastructure that the city already, you know, has existing. We are obviously in support of these changes, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have for me.
Any questions today? No, thank you for your support. Any other testimony in support?
Good afternoon. My name is Anne Post. I'm an attorney at Rempholt Ledkey Law Firm, eleven twenty-eight Lincoln Mall, Suite three hundred. I'm here today on behalf of the Home Builders Association of Lincoln to testify in support of this, of this agenda item. Generally, the home builders are supportive of this because it promotes or, or puts in place several policies that the home builders have advocated for, for a long time. That includes the recognition of the use of lift stations and how they can and should be used to help expand the growth of Lincoln. That includes recognition of the role that A D Us can play in expanding housing opportunities in Lincoln. And that includes just providing flexibility and expanding options to build, to build more housing in Lincoln and to expand housing opportunities. So we're very supportive of all of those policy matters. As far of this, as far as the specifics of this ordinance, we still have some questions about exactly the logistics of how these ordinances are going to work to expand those, how they can be utilized for more than just the initial project, but utilized for future projects throughout the city. So while we still have some questions on that, home builders did not get to participate in reviewing or the drafting of these, provide comment before it became the Planning Commission's agenda on these items. But we do have meetings already scheduled with the Planning and Development Services Department to have some of those conversations. So, that, thank you very much. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Okay, thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, members of the Planning Commission. Pardon me, I'm Mark Hunsaker. I'm just, I'm appearing in a neutral capacity, really. I'm simply here as an interested sort of citizen who happened to catch this change coming through the process. I think it's a great idea to expand the use of lift stations. We've done it in the past. There are probably fifteen or twenty of them out there. I personally got three of them approved, but none of the three that I got approved would qualify under this change. And so I'm, I'm a little bit, I mean, you understand, the problem is that Lincoln has grown and developed basically to the top of the watershed in every direction. That means that the next abutting contiguous property which could be annexed, and that's a requirement for city sewer service, the next property to be annexed is at the top of the hill. And the sewers, of course, are at the bottom of the hill. And if you look at the map, you'll see that in watersheds like the Stevens Creek watershed, you might be abutting the city's limits. You may have available water. You may have everything else available, but the sewer might be four miles away. And so, using lift stations in that circumstance makes a lot of sense. It doesn't enable you to develop all the way down to the bottom because there probably isn't that much capacity in the existing watershed. But it helps, and it's a good idea. And these regulations, as I understand it, were developed in negotiations with a single developer, which is fine. I support that project. I think it's probably a good idea, a good project. But, in my opinion, it is misleading to pretend that these regulations create a more usable development tool to be of benefit to the entire community. A hundred and fifty acres is way too big. That's seven hundred and fifty units based on the minimum density requirement. You don't see more than one project a year, if that, of that size. So if you really want to encourage the ability to get over those ridgelines and, and develop contiguous property, as has been our past practice and is, is, you know, integral part of our Unified School District, you need to be a little more flexible than that. I have no idea what A D Us have to do with this. And the idea that you have to have ten percent of the lots that are so small that if you put a bungalow and a two-star stall garage on them, you don't have room enough for a swing set. I mean, I don't know, I don't know what all that has to do with this policy. It's, it's, if you want more A D Us, get rid of the regulations that prohibit them. If you want smaller lots, get rid of the density requirements that are in the zoning ordinance, and people will develop in accordance with, with what the market is asking for. And truly, there is a market for smaller lots to make lots more affordable. But if you continue to say, okay, we're going to do that, but we're only going to do it in these circumstances, under these limited and restrictive circumstances, it doesn't do that much good. So, I'm, again, I'm in favor of the idea of, of expanding the use of lift stations. I think the project that, that came forward and precipitated this discussion is probably, you know, should be approved. But we need to have a little more discussion about making the, the, the regulations, you know, the, the process of using lift stations more accessible to more people, to more developers, and, and not require that you have large-scale developments. Those require accumulation of lots of capital. They raise the cost of, of everything. And one of Lincoln's problems is, you know, when, when I was first starting in this business, we had, there were probably forty different developers who were out there working and, and developing lots. And today, we don't have anywhere near that, and the reason has been it's just become so darned expensive to comply with all the regulations that you have to be big in order to be able to stand it. And so, I'd answer any questions you might have, but again, I hope you'll, I hope you'll consider when we, when, when somebody comes back to you with, with a little less restrictive version of this, that you'll consider that. Thank you.
Any questions?
Yes.
Of, of the three projects that you did get approved, what would, in this new writing, where would you have failed to?
Well, first of all, I'm, I know that two of them were both, two were, were, one was an office project, Lincoln Benefit Life, where it is at eighty-fourth and Firethorn. There's a, there's a lift station there. There's a, an industrial park down on Ninth and Van Dorn roughly that has a lift station that was, again, not a, not a residential project. The residential project was in Vintage Heights. But I'm not sure that, I, I haven't gone back to verify the size of that because it was twenty years ago. But I don't think it was probably big enough to qualify under the hundred and fifty acre rule. So, I mean, they were all good projects. The Lincoln Benefit Life project kept five hundred jobs in Lincoln. The industrial project was something that was needed in that area. And Vintage Heights, of course, has been very successful. But we couldn't do it under these regs.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other testimony in support or in a neutral capacity? Any testimony in opposition? Any testimony in opposition? Staff questions, please. We'll start with Commissioner Dick.
Steve or David, if a project came forward, as Mark just discussed, is it possible for exceptions to be brought to the commission or the council or the county board to accommodate either smaller projects or other things that might be inhibited for them proceeding?
I might start with that one and let Steve add in after my, whatever I provide. So I just, I think that's a very good question, especially upon Mark's testimony. I want to just make sure that it's clear to everybody that's participating in this hearing as well as listening is that the current policy starts at 500 acres and goes up. This one is starting at 150, so we are already accommodating a lot more. I mean, and again, this is a, this is a step in a direction of providing more flexibility. I think mostly our position is we want to put this in place and get something to happen, and then we will see what else happens. And then we certainly are, as we always are, we're always willing and able to look at our code and policies and see if we need to adjust it. Another big point here is, and we've talked, we talked about this, what about the economic development project that could benefit from this? So, again, we're focusing on housing projects in this change. If something comes forward that is purely economic development, we obviously, and I might be clear about this, we will be open to that conversation. If it truly does need to have some type of lift station, and then again, it's still going to have to qualify for a way to try to tap into the existing system. It's going to have to be capacity downstream or other improvements will be needed. So I wouldn't, we're not at all saying we're closing our door to that, but we're focused on the housing part of it for this proposal.
Thank you.
Commissioners?
Yes.
I don't have the future land map memorized, so do you know of or have had discussions with developers interested in some land, like Mark had mentioned, that is close to current development and just expands Lincoln's footprint, that would need, like, so it doesn't meet this 150-acre minimum? Have you had those discussions with developers wanting to pursue some piece of our future land map use for development, but it wouldn't meet this, but they would need to use a lift station?
So we've had some general discussions, but again, I think it's really important to kind of go to the very beginning to find out that, first, if they don't meet the acreage thing, right, or if they don't meet some of those other parameters. Really, the keystone is to do that initial analysis to find out if there's downstream capacity. That's really the very first thing that we would encourage somebody to do that says, hey, here's a parcel. We're like, okay, what's the downstream capacity look like? Because if the answer to that is, there isn't any, well, then, you know, we won't waste anybody else's time.
Okay.
I think I'll add to that. So as we kick the tires on this a little bit, a question similar to that came up, which is what if I only have 80 acres of the 150 or the 200 that somebody owns? And that, and only that amount could be served by whatever the capacity is downstream? Yes, we would, we would be able to be flexible enough to say, let's develop, we'll end up being like a first phase of a project. Let's lay out like an preliminary platform, the rest of the land, and then we'll proceed with those discussions. But we, yes, we'd be open to using whatever that downstream capacity is, even if it isn't enough for the entirety of that property that's being discussed.
Okay. Brooke?
Yes.
Commissioner?
Can you maybe expand a little bit on the process for developing these regulations and the language, and who you talked to, and who had input?
So, so when we, when we started this process, like David had indicated, it was precipitated by the application that you all heard for the Comp Plan Amendment. They met with us, we had those conversations with them, we had some internal discussions shortly before, or right when the ordinance was created and published, then we provided, provided it to some folks for their feedback. So that has been really the process that we've had to date. Also, just again, anecdotally, with discussions with the development community in terms of, these are the things that we're looking at, because when it came, when the Comp Plan Amendment came forward, it was kind of like, well, hey, how's this going to happen? Is the pump station policy going to be amended? So we had some of those conversations. But there, you know, like Anne Poste indicated, there wasn't necessarily a formal working group, because again, the lens that we looked at was, what do we have today? What does today allow? And if we can make sure that we, we expand the flexibility on that, then we, then we are moving that ball forward. You know, it may not be a chunk 25-yard play, but it's, you know, it's eight yards.
Nice analogy.
And I'll add to that by saying that, you know, since, since the proposed policy has gone public, we have gotten more feedback, and as Anne mentioned, representing H-Ball, we do have a meeting set up with them. I know that they're interested, very interested, and I do, I do hope and expect it to be a, you know, we're glad this is happening, but we want to provide more, more input, more feedback. And again, I think as we move forward with this policy, updated policy, that, you know, we might come back a year or two or three down the road and tweak it again, because maybe there is something that we learn along the way. So we're not closing the door on that at all. I think that this, this does take that step. It does get that eight-yard play to make it a little bit easier to get something done.
One more question. I also was a little confused about the inclusion in the ADU language, and here it seemed a little, not random, but kind of. So could you elaborate a little bit more on the inclusion of that, and if the purpose of that is really to encourage more ADUs or make it easier? Is this really the best way to do that?
Thank you. So I'll also pick up on the 10% lots of being 4,000 square feet or smaller. So as we talked about this, we came around to really just leaning into wanting this policy and then other efforts that we're doing along the way here, to try to provide more opportunity for more housing, more units, almost in any form that we can get it to happen. The other part of this is that we have, we have a housing cost issue here and across the nation. I'm not alone on that. So we all, we're acknowledging that ADUs are a more affordable, they're not necessarily cheaper, not cheap, cheap, they're not, they're not cheap, but they're cheaper. And also, if we're going to be honest about trying to start with a lower price point, a smaller lot size is going to be a way to do that, and that is a way to do it in the zoning code. There's a lot of other things we don't have control over, but that would be one way to do it. And again, it's 10% of the single-family detached that we're talking about in a project, so it's not a massive footprint for a project. So that's the thinking behind it, is that as long as we're making sure that those are part of a project that's, that's able to take advantage of this more available policy, we can at least have some of those units, some of those lots, be a little bit more affordable than what we would otherwise get. And I will note that a lot of projects do have localized restrictions on ADUs. That does happen, and so that's kind of where that began, whereas if we can make sure that they're not restricted from happening, at least it's an option. We're not forcing people to do ADUs.
Any other questions or any other rebuttal that you'd like to provide?
I would just say thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Do you want to hear from applicant?
They are the applicant, and then I ask them if they'd like their rebuttal.
Yeah.
And then, thank you for thanking us for listening.
Then I would move to close the public hearing.
Second, fight.
Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Eber?
Yes.
Fight?
Yes.
Ronenberg?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Public hearing closed.
And I would move to approve text amendment 25012.
Second, fight.
Okay, who would like to start the? Commissioner Campbell?
This is a great first step, and it, it does open up some opportunities for our community that haven't existed necessarily in the past. And we've always had a policy of the, as the city grows, the city services grow with it, as well as the school system growing with it, and so on and so forth. So that has kept Lincoln from having all these suburbs, like Omaha and, and other communities have developed around the country, to where we keep a contiguous city. And this, though, allows us to do some of that expansion where everything that's sewer does exist. I do think that this will evolve further, and I think there will be further, like, reduction of number of acres, and so on and so forth. And the smaller lot size, I can tell you, does make a difference for people in their, in their decision to build, so I will be supporting this.
Commissioner?
I agree, Commissioner Campbell, and I'm just glad to hear that we're still flexible in having those discussions, and those discussions will happen, especially now, you know, we just had a briefing about our Comp Plan adjustments and future land map adjustments, and so I think that will solicit even more discussion on what land is available, where do we want these developments to happen, and where is sewer, where is not? So I'm glad that we can continue to be flexible and work together to make sure we continue with our processes that we have in the past to keep Lincoln one city.
I, I will be supporting this because I do think it is a step in the right direction. I don't think it's perfect yet, and I think planning maybe is acknowledging that. I also want to be careful about changing regulations in an effort to make things more flexible, but then baking into that some inflexibility for developers, like requiring smaller lot sizes. So that feels a little contradictory to me. I appreciate the sentiment behind that of trying to make sure that we have more affordable housing, but I also don't want to make that, that a project can't make sense financially for a developer because we're forcing that 10% smaller lot size requirement. But again, I'll, this is a hard, like, way to, I don't want to start redlining the regulations that have been proposed to us, so I'm not really sure how else to address that.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. Any other comments? I agree with my fellow commissioners, I will be supporting this policy, and I think that it's been a lot of good testimony, a lot of good things brought forward, and a lot of things to think about with the future. Shelley?
Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Eber?
Yes.
Fight?
Yes.
Ronenberg?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
Next item, item 4.2, miscellaneous 25013, to review the proposed determination that the Lincoln Cornhusker redevelopment area be declared blighted and substandard as defined in the Nebraska Community Development Law. The study area is approximately 2,065 acres, generally located between North 56th Street on the east, Superior Street on the north, North 27th Street on the west, and Holdre Street on the south. Associated with item 4.3, miscellaneous 25014, to review the proposed determination that the Lincoln Cornhusker Blight Area meets the statutory definition of extremely blighted as defined in the Nebraska Community Development Law. The study area is approximately 2,065 acres, generally located between North 56th Street on the east, Superior Street on the north, North 27th Street on the west, and Holdre Street on the south. Are there any expertake communications to be disclosed on these applications?
There are none.
Are there any expertake communications that took place or additional information you learned while visiting any of these sites to be disclosed?
There are none. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Tim C. with the City Attorney's Office, 555 South 10th Street. I will not take much of your time, but just wanted to give you some assurance that, yes, you have indeed seen identical applications to these before. Some questions were, so you're not having a deja vu moment or anything like that. There were some questions raised about process last time, and sometimes it is simply prudent to restart the process, and that is one of the options available in situations like this. And so that is what you have in front of you today, is a, is a restart of the process so that all those items can be taken care of. And so, again, we start today, the comments from the last time have been brought forward, so everything is, is in front of you. The physical documents are here in the binder on the dais for anybody that wants to review them. And with that, I would, I can answer questions you have, but I suspect there are other people who have comments you'd rather hear from than me. So if you have any questions, I can take them, but otherwise, I will move out of the way.
Maybe an easy one. So procedurally?
Right.
Is it still open?
Procedurally, this is like, this is a completely new process.
Okay, start over.
Start over.
Reset.
Reset.
Button pushed, okay.
Thank you.
And he is, he's representing the applicant and staff, so, just so we know, and we have two items that will require separate motions.
And you'll, you'll hear from staff with respect to the substantive matter, so.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Good afternoon, Dan Marvin, Urban Development, 555 South 10th Street. In an effort to not make this exactly what I did the last time, I brought a different map.
All right.
So we'll see if it pops up here. There it is. So I brought this because I know you would be familiar with this. This went through in the spring, the University Place Subarea Plan, and what I think needs to be understood in this process, doesn't necessarily have to go in this particular order, it can go in different orders, but we would do a subarea plan, and that would inform us from conversations with the community about what kind of tax we want to do up in that. Blighting itself, on its surface, doesn't allow for the use of tax increment financing, so then you would need to have a redevelopment plan come forward, and in some cases, the redevelopment plan for the blighted area that we're talking about here is going to be maybe multiple redevelopment plans for different areas. And what you see on this particular map is the gray areas are areas that have been previously blighted, and I'll plead a little bit of ignorance, because I was not involved with the city until later in July, and all those conversations would have occurred before, but I can speculate as to what some of those conversations would have been, and one was, we have an older blighted area, and the state of Nebraska would like us to review those areas to see if they still are blighted, or we remove them as being blighted areas. So the gray areas you would see were areas that had previous been blighted, and this would be a way to, well, we're not exactly sure what the state's provision is for reviewing these, because it says review, it doesn't says re-blight, but this would be, you know, a very official way of looking at the parcels and determining whether those areas still meet the state statutes of a blighted area. I know from service previous that Cornhusker Highway is an entryway corridor, that we as a community and urban development planning would like to be able to do things along that corridor to make that area look more inviting for people that are coming into Lincoln. Have we ever done this in Lincoln? Yes, we have. We've done this on your trek to the airport. You will see that that area has had efforts to improve that corridor. How have those efforts been paid for? In some cases, they've paid for, been paid for with tax increment financing. So we've used that as a tool. So some of these areas along Cornhusker Highway, I can imagine would have been thought, let's see what we can do on that corridor, and let's include those areas. So what you see is the dashed area is the subarea plan, the other areas are efforts to address older blight areas and to reaffirm whether they are blighted or not, and then the third would have been a goal to try to address a corridor that we think does need some improvement, and the use of tax increment financing could be done in that area. I know the last time I was in here, we talked about extreme blight, extreme blight we used in the Belmont area, and we used it on Northwest 48th Street. Extreme blight, we used in the Belmont area, and we used it on Northwest 48th Street to blight those areas and extreme blight them only with no redevelopment plan in place because the state of Nebraska had a $5,000 tax credit that was available for homeowners and owner occupied homes. And we wanted to create, I think, take advantage of what I think the state did, which was correct, to try to give an offset for owner occupied buyers, an ability to create an incentive for them to become an owner occupied rather than to compete with folks who are purchasing properties for a rental use. And so we did that in Belmont, we did that Northwest 48th Street, and we have had a fair amount of success in providing those tax credits in all the areas that we have identified as extremely blighted. This area too would be, identifies as extremely blighted. I don't want to raise this up to a pedestal as this is a really important reason to approve this, but this is another element. The reason it's not, it's a little more speculative because if we approve it this year, those people who did acquire properties in this as owner occupied would be able to take advantage of the $5,000 tax credit. However, the state is likely to sunset that provision at the end of this year, so into 2026, I don't know that that will be something that people will avail, be able to avail themselves of, but it's possible that it could get reintroduced as well. So long story short, I think the way the city has typically used blight studies is we have an expert, and we hired Keith Marvin, no relationship that we believe, but Keith does do this. He's certified to be able to do all the review of the properties and to identify whether this area meets the definition provided by the state as being blighted and substandard. And that is, in fact, what the report shows. Don't have any reason to believe that the report could be significantly altered in such a way that this would, would fall out of being declared blighted and substandard. We have here as well Jennifer Hyatt and Kurt Elder here as well, will be able to answer staff questions if we have some. But I'll stop there and take any questions that you might have.
Yes, Commissioner Campbell.
Dan, when this came up to us before in July or whatever, there was some testimony about wanting, the neighborhood wanting to add a lot and so on. I think it was to the south and west area of that project. Has there been any change in the layout of the blighted area since, since then?
No.
So that lot was?
That, that lot was not added. And truth of the matter is, is we've had this, I've had this conversations with people that do these studies, it changes the entire calculation. It's almost like doing a whole new study. So as a potential to do a blight study that would include that lot could be as a future neighborhood area that we would look at, but I think that was over near 33rd and Holdridge if I'm not mistaken.
I don't remember exactly.
And one of the reasons we did go to 33rd Street, which you'll see over here, this area over here was?
The second, it hasn't come up yet.
This area over here?
Yes.
Was included so that we could do, we have a long-term plan on Holdridge Street that would be an area of, that came across when we, when we did, that is a study area for a project that we did on a church at about 31st. And we're looking at trying to do an improvement in that corridor between 27th and 33rd Street. And this didn't extend all the way to 33rd, so that's the reason for including that. But that, this is essentially the same study that was approved by the planning commission the last time.
Thank you.
Commissioner Nod.
This may be a two-part question, and I don't know if you have the full answer, but you mentioned that the tax incentive is going away for homeowners at the end of this year. Are you, or what, first question, do we know at all like who's taking advantage of that? One, I think. And two, is there an alternative that you're aware of outside of this program being potentially reinstated, but is there any alternative vehicles for homeowners when we have this designation?
Yeah. There aren't other, there are other provisions for extreme blight, not for owner occupied. It gives you additional, if you do a project, as, as an example, Center Point did a project down on South Street to provide low-income housing in the, it was a county building, I'm trying to think of the name of it, but they applied for some state funds. That application, they were awarded additional points because they did it in an extremely blighted area. Doesn't mean that they got the project because of the fact that it was in an extremely blighted area, but what it means is they got additional points, and in a competitive process, those kinds of awards, additional points are, are important. So those don't get sunset, those don't go away at the end of this year. To answer your first question, how many, I think I asked Kurt, and I think the number I heard you thought maybe 500 by the end of the year, will have taken advantage of the $5,000 tax credit since we started the program? And that would be citywide in all the areas that we've done as extremely blighted.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
Commissioner?
Yeah. You mentioned the city has plans along the corridor, Cornhusker Highway. Is that, are those plans been developed or discussed with the industry and business that is along that corridor?
Sure. And the blighting of it alone doesn't generate that.
Right.
Give you an example, though. We did do this out on Westo. Westo, we had a multi-year discussions with the Westo Business Association out there, and they identified, we created a master plan, which is available on the website, and it identified projects that we wanted to do in that. The first project that we did was basically to tree up the area, so we bought trees, again with tax increment financing, and we put trees through that corridor. And their thinking was, you know, trees are going to be the longest thing for anybody to notice that you actually did that, because you buy a certain caliper, and then it takes like three years for the roots to kind of actually get outside the root ball and, and get established. So we did that as the very first thing. The second project that we have, and we've been working with the state, and hopefully everything goes well by the end of this year, will put in a bicycle trail on the north side of O Street from Northwest 22nd Street to Northwest 48th Street. Again, we worked with business owners, we tried to identify the things that they felt would be most beneficial to them, and we are ticking off that list from that project over the course of the next five to 10 years.
Okay.
And I can imagine that we would do the same. Once we get this in place, we could have conversations with business owners as to what the future corridor of Cornhusker Highway could look like.
Okay. I think that's it for now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we would like to have testimony in support. Testimony in a neutral capacity. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm going to try to keep it really short because I have to use the bathroom really bad.
Start with your name and address and roll.
Name and address, so I'm Anthony Vinton. I live at 2740 Ferris Street, and the apartment's there. I think I just have two things. So the first is, I think that like doing a blight thing on areas that need it is a really good thing, especially since it prompts redevelopment usually and allows for TIF. However, I think that it is also important to make sure that the areas we're blighting and extremely blighting do actually, can legally classify as that. So I would just say that I, I, I think that a lot of the areas that they have in that group, some of it might not quite meet all the requirements for that. The other thing is, I think that Marvin Planning had mentioned previously that they had used the assessor's site for some of their data, that there is a disclaimer actually on the assessor's site that mentions that it, it can't actually be used as a reliable source of information. So, and some of it might be not fully up to date as well. So that was just the two things that I had.
Questions? Thank you.
Of course.
Any other testimony in a neutral capacity?
I live at 3236 Dudley Street, and we live in an area just south of, of 33rd and Holdridge, and that area is not in this study area. And so the first thing I just wanted to say was the area that we had wanted added to it was the block between 32nd and 33rd, between Star and, and Holdridge. Some people in that area would like to see this happen because it might bring about some development, and they were really interested in seeing something good happen to the Agmen Building there, which has been sitting empty for 10 years. They thought this would help, and I agree that it would probably help. I do know now that there is something that's possibly in the works on the Agmen property, but it isn't final yet, and it still might give them some advantages if this were blighted. But that, as I understand, is just impossible to add that to this because it would be a whole new study, but I would recommend that that be considered in the future. I also know that we were very, as a neighborhood, excited about the possibility of something being done to, on, on Holdridge Street there. And what I don't understand is, this blighted study would cut right down the middle of Holdridge, so it would only apply to properties on the north side of Holdridge. So that doesn't make any sense to me. The, the beautification of Holdridge would be on both sides, but it apparently couldn't apply to any of the properties on the south side because they're not part of the study. So that, that's just a thought there. But in general, I guess I still question, I guess I agree with what Anthony said there, that just as a layperson, I don't understand how you can have such a large number of properties that are in excellent condition, there's nothing wrong with them, and get them included in a blight study. And I just find that baffling. And so I still feel like that you could have blight at areas that are more precise, that actually look at the properties, that there's really a good potential for development. I think there's a big, large area of both University Place, and although Clinton has already been in a blighted area, there's lots of areas of Clinton that are in perfectly good shape now, and they really don't benefit from a blight, blight. So maybe it all needs to be revisited and, and narrowed some. That would be my opinion. But anyway, that's my two cents worth there.
Any questions for this testimony? Thank you for your testimony. Any other testimony in a neutral capacity? Any testimony in opposition? Welcome.
I just wanted to give you a heads up. I'm prepared.
Can you put the microphone a little closer to you?
Sorry.
And, and do, start with your name and address, please.
My name is Abigail Hazard, P.O. Box 82247, Lincoln, Nebraska 68501. I won't run over the five minutes, I'm so sorry. I tried to make it as short as possible, and it's just too much to say.
Might be a little bit, okay? We're okay with that?
So I'll read fast.
Okay, thank you.
So I'm a resident of Clinton neighborhood. I'm also a board member. As an independent researcher with L&amp;K Insight, I've spent the last several months reviewing the city's blight and extreme blight studies and process in detail, but I found raises serious questions about the accuracy of the data and integrity of this process. I understand as planning commissioners, your job is mostly about realizing that the things comply with the comprehensive plan, but I think this is your opportunity to advocate for transparency and a fair process that's accurate. And also to clarify on something Dan Marvin said, I, earlier this year, reached out to Senator Quick's office, and the $5,000 tax credit was extended to the end of this, not past this end of this year, till 2032. And it is a one-time tax credit, that's all you get for an income tax. So just to clarify, some of you may be wondering why this hearing is happening again. We are here today because the city of Lincoln was unable to verify whether all residents had been properly notified via public notice. This and procedural errors of July 23rd's hearing led to the Nebraska Attorney General's Office investigating the process. Additionally, the Attorney General's Office decision is what led to the withdrawal and this new hearing. I'm here to highlight significant documented examples that show why this designation should not move forward as is. Something I previously did not show you was on page two of Marvin Planning Consulting's Substandard Blight Study, it misquotes state statute saying the Nebraska Community Redevelopment Law. There is no redevelopment law which negates the study writers' previous testimony of saying they copy and paste the statute. There's only the community development law. Moving on, the blight study blames infrastructure deterioration as a major factor, about 40 to 50% of the justification basis. To further underscore the issue, I've found documentation showing direct city neglect in specific areas proposed for blight. City records obtained via public records requests show that out of 36 sidewalk repair requests I reviewed from the last four years, the city completed only 13 or 36%. In other words, two-thirds of those reported issues remain unresolved. And in some cases, the work supervisor didn't even come out to inspect for over a year after work completion. Those very unresolved maintenance issues are now being cited as justification to declare our neighborhood blighted. That's not evidence of decay, that's evidence of city neglect. In fact, several of those sidewalk requests in the city's own database are still marked as on hold. I'd also like to clarify, I questioned you, Commissioner Fite, asked Dan Marvin, Urban Development Director, at the previous hearing regarding whether this blight designation would prioritize sidewalk requests already sent to LTU. And it will not prioritize these neglected sidewalk requests. In fact, the only way it would is if the city chose to allow a developer to take over the property in question and to make a new development on there. There's only been one instance of a sidewalk being replaced in this manner out of 36 sidewalks I studied, and that was the P Street development Dan Marvin mentioned before. That is 2.8% of those requests, so it's very unlikely that sidewalk requests will be addressed with a blight designation. Both the proposed and extreme blight study and substandard blight study raise concerns of statutory non-compliance. Nebraska revised statute, Chapter 18-2103, Section 11 explicitly requires that any blight finding be based on evidence- be based on evidence of the presence of the conditions within the area designated. Both blight studies flagrantly violate the clear language of the law. Multiple images labeled as blight findings in the Marvin Planning blight study are located outside the designated area. This alone constitutes a violation. Importantly, the extreme blight study used census block groups that are not within the area designated to be blighted. This inflated unemployment and poverty rates. It was previously noted that the data misrepresents these neighborhoods. According to the U.S. Census Bureau's 2023 American Community Survey, the actual tracts that make up, make up Clinton University Place, Tracts nineteen, twenty-point-oh-one, and twenty-point-oh-two, have unemployment rates between 2.9 and 3.3%, and poverty rates between fourteen and seventeen percent. Those figures are statistically comparable to the citywide averages and do not meet Nebraska's statutory threshold for blight or extreme blight. As a reminder, state law requires twenty percent. The way the city achieved these numbers was they used census tracts from other parts of the city, from downtown, that's Census Track one-two-nine, and Lincoln, West Lincoln, near south. And Census Track twenty-nine was the only one included in the extreme blight study that actually was part of this proposed blight area. I respectfully ask all of you that this blight designation be postponed until inaccurate and long-abiding studies are completed and that we, we genuinely, the public notice that we get to talk about this before we're here. And that's basically all I have to say. So I'm willing to answer any of your questions.
Commissioners, do you have questions for this testimony? Thank you for your testimony. Is there other testimony in opposition?
Hello. Hello, my name is Emma Hazard, P.O. Box eight-two-two-four-seven. I'm also a Clinton Neighborhood resident and C.N.O. board member. I'm also an independent researcher with L.N.K. Insight. I oppose this blight, but I support responsible revitalization of Lincoln's older neighborhoods if the blight process is applied accurately and transparently. For the record, the commission has been made aware of statutory requirements and procedural noncompliance related to this designation, including mandatory reevaluation and sequencing of redevelopment plans under Nebraska law. The 2025 blight substandard study fails to satisfy statutory reevaluation requirements. The study provides no map or comparison to the original blight designation. And the original study has not been made available for meaningful public review, preventing verification as required by Nebraska Revised Statute eighteen dash twenty-one-oh-nine, Section two, and Chapter eighteen, twenty-one, oh-nine, Section four. So what I mean by that is the original study. So you're saying like thirty years ago, there's multiple studies? Cause there's one from nineteen ninety-eight as well? And there's no true comparison? Can we actually address whether those issues are current, the same, deteriorated, worse? There's no comparison. And re-declaring this area as blighted without the mandated side-by-side reevaluation of original and current conditions is procedurally and legally unsupported. And it just perpetuates the status quo rather than addressing longstanding neighborhood needs. The study also contains inaccurate statistics and photos. Many cited blight conditions reflect city maintenance failures, streets, sidewalks, and code enforcement rather than intrinsic neighborhood blight. Labeling maintenance failures as blight channels public funds to redevelopment and developers instead of routine neighborhood repairs. TIF dollars are tied to specific redevelopment projects, not general infrastructure or homeowner repairs. So sidewalks and other basic needs will remain unaddressed except when redevelopment occurs. That diverts public resources away from schools and essential services. The city's presentation of this expanded 2,065-acre area as a reevaluation is misleading. There's no evidence the original decades-old study was actually reevaluated and making the original study physically available today at this hearing. Without prior availability does not satisfy the public review. So another sequencing problem. The University Place and Thirty-third Cornhusker Subarea Plans. They're plans, but, so, they also function as redevelopment plans. And they were adopted before the required reevaluation of blight conditions, creating a procedural conflict with Nebraska Revised Statute eighteen twenty-one-oh-nine and eighteen twenty-one-eleven. Proceeding under these circumstances risks invalidating the statutory sequence and undermining the legality of sub, blight designation. So what I want to explain with that, the subarea plans do detail, like in-depth plans. But with a blight designation, you can't have a plan passed. And this was passed by city council before we're reevaluating this. So that kind of raises some concerns how, cause there's still a plan. And according to state statute, you can't have any plans passed or in like mind ahead of time. So I respectfully ask if you can, like the reevaluation process and the side-by-side comparison and the two current conditions with the original conditions? Cause I've seen a lot of updates in University Place. So it's kind of confusing how it's still the same.
That's time.
Thank you for your consideration. And I can clarify any questions you have.
Any questions for this testimony? Not at this time, thank you. Any other testimony in opposition? Okay, staff questions?
We have a variety of questions that came up. Dan Marvin, again, Urban Development, five-five-five, South Tenth Street. So brought Kurt along to talk about some of the math that's involved in calculating extreme blight. There were questions related to that. I think that there's questions about subarea plans and redevelopment plans. We don't have a redevelopment plan before you. There was a subarea plan that was previously adopted, which is folded into the comp plan. And one other comment I'll make before I, before I let Kurt get into the, the math issue. I mean, we are using tax increment financing to do sidewalks. Northwest Twenty-second Street to Northwest Forty-eighth Street will be paid for with District TIF. We have a $25 million project in the downtown, which is essentially sidewalk repair and replacement work on O Street, which is Project O. That's paid for with tax increment financing. So we absolutely do use TIF to pay for sidewalk repair. And as many of you are aware, when you see our C.I.P. budget, there's always a competition for those dollars. We try to augment in those areas of greatest need with tax increment financing as we're moving along. So I'll stop there on that and I'll let Kurt talk about.
Extreme blight.
Extreme blight.
Kurt Elder, Urban Development, five-five-five, South Tenth Street. Perhaps just a broader overview might be helpful, just to, so we're all on the same page. So there's some, just some connections here. So the, so the legislature passed their extreme blight rules processes, and it is twenty percent poverty, two-hundred, two-hundred percent unemployment. And it says to either use the, the single census or to use the most recent five-year ACS census data. When we think about how we operationalize that broad language, there is some, there is, there is a process. And so there are five different ways that you can operationalize this. And, and this method that we used here is the, is the method that Omaha uses, Norfolk uses, Grand Island uses, South Sioux City uses. And, and we'll touch more on about how the areas are just different and not contiguous. So the, so the state statute is a bit open. So we do our best with the best intent. The testimony that was given to you about the rates of unemployment and poverty, they had cited tract data. And tract data is a good census data. But the statute itself, the state statute, does not say what level of geography to use or, or then how to mitigate against those large margins of errors once you get down to different levels of geography. So by a state statute, we could take the census information for a city and see if it qualifies. We could use that. We could use tracts, we could use block groups. The reason we use block groups is just to have a more refined dataset, data points. And so when we look at the state statute again, it says average those areas. So we don't take, so let's say if one area had, you know, five percent poverty, another one had thirty, we don't, we don't take the average of those. We take averages of the numerator and the denominator, and we do that. There was a, perhaps a thought about, you know, why is it, why is the area bigger than others? That's, so we, so we can take that conversation both ways, right? So let's say we use the tract information that they cite. So a tract is roughly fifteen hundred households. Let's say that you had a small blight area of a block and a half. You know, just that was your blight area. So both ways. Is it appropriate to take that whole tract information and apply it to that little block? That's problematic, too. But the reason we went to the broader area was to, that's, that's more of the process that we, that, that is the standard practice used across the state is, is to define an area that has an impact, that is connected. And that's the reason why we did that. Is there anything else I can answer on that?
Any specific questions from us?
Maybe nuance from a numbers perspective. Is there guidance around margin of error?
There is not. So, so once you get down to different levels of geography, your margins can change. And once again, to unique subsets of either poverty or income, as, as you go higher, it's your margins are small. As you go into more unique subsets, the margins increase, but there is no guidance. And that was noted within the report as well. And we just tried our best to operationalize and be transparent about that.
Okay. Any other specific questions on math? Yes?
Keith, do you want to, there, there's some comments about this does not meet state statutes in regards to designated as a blighted area.
Okay.
Thank you, Dan. Refer, if you, on the study, Keith Marvin, sorry. Keith Marvin, Marvin Planning Consultants, David, City, Nebraska.
Excellent, thank you.
There was a lot of numbers, statute, statute numbers thrown out in the opposition side. On page two, we actually cite directly out-of-state statute. And when we start talking about blight and substandard, the key here is the definition of substandard means an area in which there is a predominance of buildings. The same becomes the same for blight and substandard. So we're looking at a large area. Does that mean every structure we look at meets every criteria or even the main criteria that, that the substandard and blight definition spell out? No, it doesn't. We're looking at the area as a whole. And I'll, I'll just put this up here. This is out of the study. See if it comes up. You can see speckled in there good, bad, and other types of structures throughout that area. Now, as far as the assessor's data, yes, there is a disclaimer on those. Under state law, the assessor is supposed to evaluate every piece of property in their county every three years. So the worst-case scenario is we have a piece of ground that we're looking at that was not been done for three years. And they typically do them in areas. So the whole area was evaluated probably at the same time. So our, our philosophy is if it's good enough for the assessor's office to sit there and to say, "Your house has to pay X number of dollars in property taxes based upon your condition, your age, and everything else," it should be good enough to use in these studies, to at least examine. They have more education when it comes to evaluating what the condition of a structure is than our staff does. And I trust them immensely because of the fact that it has to be three years or less. Anything else I can answer that was brought up?
Commissioner?
I think it was a valid point. It was brought up that, that map. You talked about the gray areas where a previous blighted.
Yes.
And then, but now we have, we had to reevaluate them, and now we have the new larger map. They were concerned that that previous blight study was maybe not available or didn't know where to find it. Is that something that is available for those gray areas?
Jennifer's moving the mic, but I, I will also go to what Dan said in opening is the state talks about reevaluation. They are very silent on what we have to do to reevaluate. So we reevaluate it as to how it is today.
Okay.
Hi, Jennifer Hyatt, Urban Development, five-five-five, South Tenth Street. So I think you can look at it a few different ways here as well. Marvin and Associates did the work to actually designate this area as blighted and substandard, and that is up to you guys. So while the state statutes, the new statutes, say a review, and they do give some areas of what we would look at as a review, really here, we took the opportunity to actually do a re-designation. So we're, like, Keith did all of the data analysis, so you could re-designate this area. Our department is also looking at a few other areas, and we will be doing a different type of review for each of those areas as we see fit. We had a fiscally responsible opportunity here to engage Keith to look at this area as it was so close to our University Place subarea. And so we took that opportunity to have a full study done in this area, utilizing an expert in blight and substandard designations. So while I understand the point that was being made, and our blight studies are available to the public, and people can request our blight studies. Really what you're looking at here is the opportunity for a full re-designation based on the data collected.
Any other specific questions at this time? And then also applicant rebuttal at this time?
I have, I have, I have nothing more. If you have any questions for me, I'm, I'm happy to answer them.
Perfect, okay. Excellent motion.
I would move that we close the public hearing.
Second, fight. Sorry, Ball. Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Eber?
Yes.
Fight?
Yes.
Brunberg?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Public hearing closed.
And I am moved that we approve miscellaneous two-five-zero-one-three, declaring the area blighted, the Lincoln-Cornhusker redevelopment area.
Second, fight.
Do, I'm gonna just ask a question of the commissioners. Do you want to talk about both at the same time?
Yeah, we can talk about both.
Sounds great.
I, I think the evidence is there that it deserves both. And I will be voting for both motions. Knowing the area also, yes, it's an area that needs some assistance on improvement. So I think the department has done very well in recognizing that need and, and spending time putting it together. Could another property or two be added, or a south side of Holdridge be added, or something like that? That may come a little later. But at this point, they've That may come a little later, but at this point, they've got a good roadmap.
Commissioner. I'll support this. I will definitely want to pass this just because I do think it provides a lot of opportunity for TIF funding and for improvements, and I really appreciate that. I mean, I do have concerns. The arguments brought today are, in my opinion, valid. I am concerned about using data that could be three years old on a house because you could renovate a house in six months, and it's gorgeous and beautiful, and sidewalks have been fixed and things like that. So using assessor data, you know, I struggle with that. I also struggle with, as our folks said today, just using sidewalks and streets as reasons to blight something when those are responsibilities of the city to keep them up to date and not the fault, I guess, of the homeowners and the neighbors. But I'm also glad to hear from Mr. Marvin that that can be, hopefully, my hope is that all of those pictures of all those sidewalks and curbs that are needing repair will rise up in the prioritization of using TIF funding to fix the area, including sidewalks and on streets and curbs. I only have two more comments. One is I do hope that, given that our testimony today mentioned that they spoke to Senator Quick and that the five thousand dollars is extended, I kind of hope our city does some sort of education campaign for the folks living in that area so they know how to get that money. I know personally, I wouldn't quite know where to start. I would just start Googling and try to figure it out, but if someone could guide our way or go to some neighborhood association meetings, go to the University Place events to talk about this opportunity, I think that is also very beneficial. And then lastly, my plea, because we just had our briefing earlier, my plea to the testimony today is to be involved in a lot of this public work for our comp plan. There's a lot of open houses around. There's a lot of ways for you to comment and pinpoint on the map places that you feel need improvement or ways that you think there could be good development in your area. So I really thank you for coming today and continue to be part of the process and go through some of these comp plan updates we're doing and add your comments so that you can truly be a voice and make sure the city knows to prioritize this area of town.
Yes, so from the most part, I agree with Commissioner Fight. One, appreciate you coming out as a community and doing the due diligence that you did. I think I might have said that last time. Great research, great way to put it together. But to double down, we just had a briefing on opportunities to sort of lead that conversation. You're sort of getting it in the middle towards the back end, but there's opportunities to lead that conversation, which I would ask you to participate if you can, right? Because I think the work you do is great. Say jokingly, but I was traveling through the state and from Colorado, and my brother commented, there's so many cones. Then he got to Lincoln, oh my gosh, there's so many cones. How many cones do you guys have? Well, I bring that up because there is funding going towards improving our roads and our streets. And, you know, I would ask that we use some of that funding to clean up the neighborhoods and fix the neighborhoods in our city. I think we have the opportunity to do that outside of the TIF funding, you know, that we are using for redevelopment. And then I think lastly is this is done in tracts. So you have a large swath of homes that are being evaluated, and it can't be individualized. And that's why I asked the question around margin error. If it's ten percent and fifteen hundred, you got a number that may not fit that criteria, right? But you sort of fit that into it. And so it's very hard to have something sort of pinpointed in these type of studies. And, you know, I feel good that there was a method, right? And that's all you can go by in this type of sort of macro view of it to evaluate the blight and extreme blight, and I appreciate the work that was done to be able to give us that view.
I just want to remind the public, those that testified, that there is a fund for sidewalk replacement. And all you have to do is work with a contractor that will replace those bad sections of sidewalk on your property, and then they submit the forms to the city, and they're totally reimbursed for it. So there is a process to get sidewalks fixed that does not come out of your own pocket.
Great, thank you. Any other comments, commissioners? I agree with my fellow commissioners. I will be supporting both of these motions. I think that this is a needed step in our process of how we do work in the city. And it's very important to realize that some things won't happen if we don't have TIF. So therefore, there would never be the tax to pull from in the future. So this gives us a great opportunity as a city. Shelley.
Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Ebert?
Yes.
Fight?
Yes.
Rothenberg?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Miscellaneous two-five-zero-one-three, approved seven to zero.
And I move that we approve miscellaneous two-five-zero-one-four, taking that blight study to completely extremely blighted.
Second, Fight.
Shelley.
Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Ebert?
Yes.
Fight?
Yes.
Rothenberg?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Miscellaneous two-five-zero-one-four, approved seven to zero.
At this time, anyone wishing to speak on an item not on the agenda may do so.
I would move that we adjourn.
Second, Fight.
Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Ebert?
Yes.
Fight?
Yes.
Rothenberg?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
We are adjourned.
Thank you.